Welcome to the first meeting of the Lincoln City Council for the month of October. Let us stand for a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the October 1st meeting of the Lincoln City Council. In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public meetings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone wishing to speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda may speak. Would the clerk please call the first item on our agenda for today?
All right. First item on our agenda for October 1st, 2018, due to the City of Lincoln Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day holiday, there will be no city council meeting on Monday, October 8th. However, the offices will be open. We also ask the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet leading on both podiums. Testifiers may use either microphone in the sign-in sheets or beside each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff also to testify, state your name, title, and department that you work for. And once you have testified and council doesn't have any other questions for you, you may return to your seat. First item on the agenda would be our consent agenda, reports of city officers. Item 1A, appointed Richard Campbell to the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission for a term to expire August 24th, 24th, 2023.
Thank you. Yes. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Dick Campbell. Live at 6111 Chartwell Lane. C.A.M.P.B.E.L.L.
Mr. Campbell, thank you for coming forward. We appreciate your willingness to serve on the planning commission. Tell us a little bit about yourself and how you came to this position.
Well, having grown up in Lincoln all my life and being in the nursery business, I've worked with a lot of developers on their projects through the years and so have some understanding and some love for the planning process. And then as we went ahead and developed our Village Gardens Traditional Neighborhood Development, there weren't many of the city regulations for planning or public works that would fit that type of a development. So we worked closely with the planning department to adopt new regulations for how things would be handled within Village Gardens. And you as a council and the planning commission both unanimously approved those changes. So it's been an interesting experience and something that we feel has helped create a traditional, a great development, a great neighborhood for people to live in. So that's basically the background of my planning.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council for this appointee? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Appreciate your service.
Thank you very much.
And next item.
Item 1B is Clerk's Letter of Mayor's Approval Resolutions and Ordinances Passed by City Council on September 17th. Item was placed on file. Lincoln Electric System Financial and Operating Statement was also placed on file. Item 2 would be Pets and Communications. Item 2A is setting the hearing date of Monday, October 15th, 2018, at 3:00 on the application of Cobal Inc., doing business as Cobal Progressive Mexican Cuisine for an addition to their licensed premises measuring approximately 19 feet by 23 feet at 4747 Pioneer's Boulevard. And Item 2B is also setting the hearing date for Monday, October 15th, 2018, at 3:00 on the manager application of Cody Schmick for Schmick's Market Inc., doing business as Schmick's Market at 2727 North 11th Street and 1340 West O Street.
Thank you. I think that was my fault. I should have just stopped you before you read that. We went right to the discussion and vote on this consent agenda items?
Yes.
Any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Is there, do we need a motion?
I think she'll say who.
Yep, we need a motion. Or, Item 1A was introduced by Jane Rabel. So moved.
Second. Thank you. So a motion by Councilwoman Raybold, second by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird. Now discussion. Long pause. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shub?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Okay. Now we're to public hearing liquor resolutions. Would you read 4A and B, please?
Application of 1220 Investment Inc., doing business as Cactus Modern Mexican and Cantina for a Class C K liquor license at 5500 South 56th Street, Suite 115, and the related manager application of Adam J. Cool.
Thank you. Is there someone in the audience? Oh, making their way here now. If I just stop talking for a second, this will go faster, right?
Hi, Michael Ritter, 9712 Andre Circle. R.I.T.T.E.R.
There's a second microphone to sign in.
Adam James Q. N. K.U.H.N. 4416 Hillside Street.
And this is swearing portion? Son, are you ready? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth that you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Gentlemen, tell us a little bit about your application.
We are taking over the space that the old Chevys used to be in and going to open up a Mexican-style restaurant. And Adam's going to be our general manager.
Other comments? Councilwoman Christensen?
When do you plan on opening?
Well, a lot of it depends on the liquor license, but we're hoping towards the end of October.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah. So, Mr. Ritter, you're affiliated with Venue?
Yes.
And you've got a number of locations, both event spaces and restaurants. Can you just tell us what the other spaces you have?
We have the Piedmont Bistro. We operate the Five Good Cents here in town, and then Venue. We also do the Jasmine Room down here in the old federal building as a reception hall. And then just a few weeks ago, we were here about the Scottish Rite, doing that as a reception hall, too. And now this, the Mexican restaurant.
Diversified.
I'm not familiar with the location. Would you tell me again the address?
It's 5500, it's 56 and Highway 2.
Okay.
And they're just north of, it's right next to like Party America and just north of CVS.
The Edgewood Shopping Center.
Yep.
Close to a large grocery store.
Yes. Super savory.
That didn't go like I thought it would. Thank you. Are there other questions from the council about this application, these applications? Would anyone in the council chambers like to speak on these two applications? Gentlemen, thank you very much. We'll vote at the end of our agenda, this section. So Items 4C and 4D, next?
Application of Tialetti's Restaurant Inc., doing business as Tialetti's Restaurant for a Class I liquor license at 2701 North 27th Street, Suite B, and the manager application of Letizia Martinez.
Good afternoon, welcome. She has some work for us to do.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes. Thank you. Welcome, and tell us a little bit about your application.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Gonzalo Munoz. I'm the accounting for Letizia Martinez Restaurant. Actually, we are here to reapply for the liquor licensee. We just have become a S. corporation for tax saving. And the liquor licensee has activated prior to that, and they told us to reapply in order to get the new licensee under the new entity. Omar Magaña is the son of Letizia Martinez. Unfortunately, she is out of the country right now for some family emergency, but they told us to be here in order to ask and answer some questions if you have. It's just they reapply for their licensing, nothing more.
So you currently have a liquor license, but you're changing your organizational structure, so you need to have a new one for the new one?
Yes, it was a super partnership before, and now it's a S. corporation.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes. Is Ms. Martinez currently the?
Owner.
She's the owner and currently the manager?
Yes.
Okay, so no changes there.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the council chambers like to address this agenda item? Thank you both for coming forward, and we'll move to our next item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Items, I took the glasses off, E and F.
Items 4E and 4F, application of Nonprofit Hub Foundation, doing business as the Foundry Community, for a Class C liquor license at 215 North 14th Street, and the related manager application of Randall D. Hawthorne.
Hello.
Hi.
Randy Hawthorne, H.A.W.T.H.O.R.N.E., 126 North 14th Street.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do, even that stuff I just said.
Well.
Self ratification.
Yes. Well, Mr. Hawthorne, tell us about, yes, hi, good to see you.
We are a coworking community at 14th and P. Street. And at the center of community is food and drink quite often, so we're expanding our coworking space to our first floor to include retail, primarily as a way to help build community, but also as a way for earned income for our nonprofit because we take on a lot of overhead with the 150 members that we have in our space. And donors don't always appreciate overhead, so this is a way for us to be able to help support our mission of helping the community, of building our nonprofit sector responsibly.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes. So, tell us what this addition will be like. What, with coffee and alcohol?
So, yeah, the primary, the primary element that we started with was coffee, but as we continued to explore this, and we thought about our community, and we think of this as a living room for our nonprofit organizations, and for them to host things, we started with the first drink of the day being coffee, but quite oftentimes you have a meeting right after work where you will have a drink. And we plan on also serving charcuterie boards at that time, so we'll be doing food and beverage in this, primarily focused on beer and wine, and, again, coffee is our primary beverages.
And what do you anticipate, your hours, and when do you expect to open?
So we'll open at probably around 7:00 o'clock, just for coffee, and then be closed between 10 and 11, depending on whether or not we'd have a special event or something in there. But definitely not 2:00. I can't stay up that late anymore.
And when do you expect to open the doors?
We hope to open our doors by the end of October as well, pending health codes and liquor licenses and all those sorts of things, and contractors.
Would you yield for an additional question?
Good having you, Mr. Hawthorne. Yes. Well, thank you. You do so many wonderful things for the community. A question for you, we've had a lot of nonprofits apply for temporary permits and so forth. You're going for a full-time liquor permit, and I'm just trying to recollect where we've had other similar situations where you're getting establishment going, but you are a nonprofit. Could you address that?
Yeah, it is a little bit of an odd bird in this community as far as having nonprofits. I can think of a couple that I'm on the board for. The Lincoln Community Playoffs, for instance, has a liquor license because they serve beer and wine before shows and things of that nature, and that's a full liquor license. I don't know that it's as full as mine, but they do have an annual liquor license that they pay instead of a per-use fee, because it just makes more sense for them on that.
Now, do they have a Class C or is that a Class I?
I believe it's a Class I. I believe. I don't know their liquor license, but I know that they have one. Sorry.
And they do it sporadically, but you're looking at doing it on a daily basis?
Yes, correct.
And can you think of any other nonprofits that operate that way?
No, I can't at this point.
I'm trying to remember if we've had any in the past, other than occasional type of things, and you're forging new ground.
I am. I'll promise to keep it under control.
I'm trying to anticipate, too, what some of the for-profit businesses might say, just as a, from a competitive standpoint, where you don't have a tax environment.
Yeah, and I feel like as I've looked at any sort of competitive landscape on this particular project, I don't foresee us taking a lot of, a lot of business from some of the establishments around us that would want to stay open later and cater to a different audience. So, yeah, that's, I want to play with our community for sure. And so I do take those thoughts into consideration as we do that, so.
Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
Yes. Thanks for coming down today. Will it look like a first-floor retail establishment like any other on P. Street? It just happens to be linked to the foundry, which is upstairs. I mean, I think part of it is that it is going to be kind of a shopping experience. Is that correct?
Yes, there would be, there would be a shopping experience to it. It's open to, it's open to the general public for sure, but I am truly focused primarily on the nonprofit community that we're already serving. That's, but obviously retail will help us with, with being able to help the nonprofits that we have in our community. It's, we're intending to be 100% give-back, so we're not looking to, as a nonprofit, I can't make the money, so we have a group that we call the founders that will be determining where any of our excess revenue will be going. So that's, that will be going back to our nonprofit community.
I mean, it might even be somewhat comparable to the 10,000 villages in the Apothecary Building, wouldn't it? I mean, that's, has a social mission, has a storefront, but not all of the.
So they don't have a liquor license, I guess, but that's what I'm just looking at. I'll ask, or investigate or just to give us some information. No negatives, just.
No, I appreciate it.
Other questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Councilman Campbell, you implied you'd like to speak with?
I was wondering if we could have our investigator come forward and enlighten us.
Investigator Hofer from the Lincoln Police Department. I'm not familiar with any nonprofits that have full-time that operate on a daily basis. We have VFW clubs, we have Eagles clubs that have their own liquor license. Most of them are open sporadic hours, but I'm not aware of any that are open Monday through Friday, five days a week. I don't, I don't see an issue with it as far as the legal side.
Maybe we need our city attorney just to comment, too, on the legality, just to make sure we're going down the right course here. And I'm sure it wouldn't have gotten to us at this point, had it had some concerns, but.
Well, Jeffra Patrick, city attorney.
Thank you.
I don't know that we have to go back, well, go back a few years for some of us, but at one time, we had the largest American Legion post in the country, I think, in Lincoln, Nebraska. And one of the reasons, other than Lincoln's patriotism, was that it had a liquor license and sold a lot of alcohol, I believe.
Plus where Bob Devaney hung out with.
Well, okay, that was another reason why it was one of the most successful and popular establishments in town, but that would be another nonprofit. Different model, much different model, but legal status would have been the same.
From a legality standpoint, we're all right then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there others in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one else come forward, I think we're ready to vote on the liquor applications.
Item 4A, application of 1220 Investments Inc., doing business as Cactus Modern Mexican Cantina for a Class C K liquor license, and the related manager application of Adam J. Cool. Introduced, or I need a motion?
Why don't we do this like we usually do, John? John, you want to make your motion? Okay.
Sorry.
Yes, I would move approval of Items 4A through 4F.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion of the motion? Hearing no discussion, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shub?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
And thanks for the assist. Now move to public hearing resolutions, 5A.
Items 5A, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city from September 1st through the 15th.
Jeffra Patrick, city attorney, I just wanted to mention to the council that there is a motion to amend, number one. There is a claimant who was working today, was unable to be here. I think we'll try to reschedule that at a 5:30 meeting to give her an opportunity.
Thank you. And we'll address that after 5B. So we'll go to 5B now. No, you want to do it now, motions? I'm sorry, you're right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on the agenda item 5A, pending claims against the city? Okay, now, thank you. So we'll move to the next agenda item, 5B.
Item 5B is authorizing expenditures of up to $12,000 from the 2018-19 Contingency Fund for direct expenses associated with the 2018 Veterans Parade.
Good afternoon, council. Rick Hoppy, mayor's office. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. As you know, several months ago, Councilman Christensen brought forward a resolution to this council establishing a Veterans Day Parade. The idea was that the nonprofit or private sector would pick up the parade and that the city then would be in a supporting role to help make sure it came off safely and well. Well, the good news is, it sounds like those things have happened. You're going to hear for a moment from Mr. Antonio Moreno, who's done a great job as the Veterans Day Parade organizer, and I think he's going to describe the fun part of this after I get done boring you with the details of the event. Well, we were fortunate that he stepped forward, and he met very recently with myself and Shane Dostal, the head of the special events team for the city that helps coordinate these efforts to make sure that all the pieces are in place. And the good news is that Mr. Moreno had certainly done his homework. So the money that you're being asked to approve would go towards several items. As you know, the city requires bonding and insurance to protect our public right-of-way for these type of events. We need barricades for traffic control. We need police officer support. Portable toilets are a great thing to have during a parade. Then on top of that, we need some temporary no-parking signs, and Mr. Moreno had a great idea for safety in terms of some vests for the many volunteers that will be working these shifts so that we can see them visibly and keep those folks safe as well. That came out to, in the neighborhood of $12,000 when we looked through the budget, and it looked like very reasonable expenditures. So in talking to our budget department, they felt like the contingency fund was a great place to go. Right now, as of today, we have $1.348 million in that account. The new budget year has just started, so the carryover from last year plus this current year's allotment puts us at that number, roughly $1.35 million. So this $12,000 will take us down a fairly minimal amount in the big scheme of the entire contingency budget. We are hopeful that the council will see their way clear to support this, and we're looking forward to having a great Veterans Day Parade.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Hoppy? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you. My name is Antonio Moreno with the Marine Corps League. Do you need my address? 7349 South 33rd Street, 68516 here in Lincoln. And, yeah, the fun part of this is we are planning and have it scheduled for November 3rd, starting an opening ceremony at 11:00 a.m. And this will be on the north side of the Capitol. Hopefully, it's not going to be icy, so we can utilize the Capitol steps. And then the grand marshal, we're hoping for a 99-year-old Marine Corps veteran to open up the parade. And once he opens up the parade, it will officially start on South 21st Street and K. Street, then move westbound to South 14th Street. The parade line, as it is going, it will turn south on South 14th Street and move around the Capitol Building, and that's where they will disband. The, right now, we have the Marine Corps League Color Guard to lead the parade, and then we will also have our float to tail in or complete the parade. So the idea is Marine Corps is the first in, last out. We do have several applications already in. We have VFW, Marine Corps League, the Army National Guard is also have their application in, and the AARP is also have their application in. Their idea is to be the vote. We are focusing on celebrating veterans, military service, and their recognition. We would like to keep it that focus, military-focused, and nonpartisan. ARP has promised, as their campaign is be the vote, get out there and vote, and nonpartisan. We will not be asking any political or public people to be in the parade to push their agenda. Do you have any questions?
Do we have questions? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thanks. Okay, so K. Street, is that one? Clarify the route again for me.
Yes.
K. Street is a one-way from eastbound, so it does go eastbound. We will be closing 14th and K. Street, and then moving west, yeah, eastbound.
Moving eastbound.
Yeah, moving, moving the closures eastbound as the traffic flows.
Okay.
And then the parade will start at the Lincoln High Parking Lot, so we will, we'll be staging at Lincoln High Parking Lot, and the official route will be 21st Street, which is McDonald's and gas station right there. And so then, from there, we will move westbound against the normal flow of traffic to 14th Streets. So then we will, it will, the parade will then be passing the stage or passing the review at the North Capitol Steps.
Okay. And I'm sure you've thought through all these things, but that's uphill, and that's okay for.
Yes, it's only a half mile. We think the, we're hoping that we're not going to have any, anyone not able to make the trip. If so, we will have volunteers, those volunteers with the vests I'm having at each corner of the street, so that way, or each block of the street, so that way if they need to assist in patrons or crowd control, or if they are needed. or crowd control, or if they are needed, uh, in the parade line to assist anyone.
Well, thanks for your, your work on this, and
Thank you.
It's, uh, important, very important.
Thank you.
Councilman Raybold has some questions.
So will this be on the first Saturday in November going forward after this one?
Sunday, isn't it?
Uh, November 3rd is a Saturday?
Yeah, it's a Saturday.
Saturday?
Um, the idea would be, yes, uh, November 2nd would be next year's, uh, first Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would like to entertain the idea of maybe doing it on Sunday, so that way we can bypass any home or away Husker games, uh, timeframes.
So then, on November 3rd, what time did you say it was going to start?
11:00 a.m.
11:00 a.m., okay.
Other questions from the council?
If there are veterans out there who want to participate in some way, how would they go about doing that?
Yeah, excellent. Uh, we can, we do have a website. It is lincolnveteransparade.org. Um, you can visit that, uh, that website. It has the basic information. It has a contact form. Uh, you can also email me directly. That is lincolnvetday@gmail.com. And on the website, we also do have the, uh, forums, registration forums, downloadable. I do have four copies here if anyone would like, uh, like a copy. Then, we are also on Facebook and have a Facebook event, and that is also Lincoln, uh, I believe it's Lincoln Vets Day is the Facebook page. And then from there, you can search the event.
Other questions from the council? Councilwoman Raybold?
Did you say it was going to be open to businesses or just nonprofits?
Um, it will be open to businesses and nonprofits and, uh, veteran organizations. Uh, we just ask that it is military and Veterans Day focused, and not promoting any, uh, not prom, not just promoting their business, long as their business also helps veterans.
The focus of the parade will be veterans.
Veterans, yes.
Other questions from the council?
I got one more, I just got to ask. Any possibility of a local band?
Yes, I have already, uh, contacted, emailed all the instrumental band instructors for all the, the public high schools. I have not been able to get in contact with anyone from Pius. Um, I'm still waiting on response for them. I also do have contacts for UNL. Um, I would, I also have a contact for ROTC. I have not heard back from them. I'm about to reach out to them again. Um, and also, I was going to ask the, um, Army National Guard if they have any bands or if they want to, um, put something together.
Very good. I know we're a little bit out, but I'm still a little confused on logistics. Everyone meets at Lincoln High, marches to the Capitol, and then there'll be a ceremony? Or is there a ceremony, and then go to Lincoln High and march back?
It's a ceremony first. It's just an opening ceremony to kick off the parade. Um, there'll be a few words of, um.
Praising encouragement.
Yeah, praising, uh, what we've done, uh, what Veterans, Veterans Day is about. The grand marshal will be driven, um, having a plan of having the grand marshal driven from 21st to the Capitol, him just barking and, uh, going to the stage and just saying that the parade begin. Uh, so it should be 15 minutes at most of a formal ceremony. And then the parade will then kick off, uh, the, the line will start from 21st. So those that don't want, don't care to see the opening ceremony can set up their chairs and blankets and whatnot along the parade line.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilwoman Lamb?
Comment. Thanks for doing this. I'm so excited to see a parade in Lincoln again. Thank you.
She loves a parade.
I do love a parade.
Are there questions from the council chamber regarding this agenda item? Anyone like to testify? Thank you very much. We're ready for our next agenda item. Wait, where are we?
That's all I have for public hearing resolutions.
I like the way that sounds.
Well, we can vote on the items?
We should vote on the items. So with item five A.
I do have a motion to amend on item five A.
You gotta first, you need to call it first.
Okay, read it, motion, who introduced it, and then we'll.
Okay, accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for September 1st through the 15th of 2018, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Raybold and a second by Camp.
I will move motion to amend number one, uh, to remove the line, the claim of Gladys Branch. I, my understanding is that's going to be happening later this month.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Christensen, second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion on the motion to amend. Hearing no discussion, I would ask you to call the roll on the motion to amend.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Now, back to our original motion, which was motioned by?
Introduced by.
Raybold and second by Camp?
Mm-hmm.
Would you call the roll for that, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
A five B for the parade.
Authorizing expenditures of up to 12,000 from the 2018-19 contingency fund for direct expenses associated with the 2018 Veterans Parade, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Raybold, second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, it's.
This is a very good thing.
Thank you.
It makes me very happy.
I was going to say, what, what type of thing is this?
Very.
Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Public hearings and, on ordinances on second reading.
Item six A is change of zone 0500 to B, application of James B. Witt on behalf of Profit Performance Club Fitting LLC to amend the links at Lincoln Planned Unit Development to allow the sale of alcohol for consumption on premises as an accessory use to the golf course and clubhouse on property generally located at 375 Fletcher Avenue.
Is there someone here to present on this item? Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. Uh, Jim White, 8360, Katrina Lane, W H I, I'll wait, T E. Okay.
Mr. White, explain to me what's going on here.
Basically, uh, the, the links now called the fairways at Lincoln had a change of ownership earlier this year. Um, they've never had a liquor license. Uh, their desire is to turn it more into a public golf course. Um, I've owned and operated a couple of those in previous locations and in Lincoln, and, um, the West Nine and the North Forty Golf Courses. So, um, just something that makes us a little more competitive, um, and, uh, something that's pretty normal in the course of the golf business, so. But I would entertain any questions.
Questions, Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, Mr. White, the, it's a nine-hole course and, and clubhouse with, with, uh, equipment and food and beverage and all those things?
Yeah, it's got a, about a 900 square foot golf shop slash, um, you know, grill, griddle, fryer operation, um, nice little golf shop and seating area. And, uh, yeah, it's got a, it's got a driving range. It's basically a lake, hitting floating golf balls, practice putting green, chipping green. It's, it's a beautiful little nine-hole golf course, way better than I was expecting to see when I went out there, I can tell you that, so.
So if, if someone's wanting practice hitting the ball into the lake, that's, that's the place to go.
Yeah, they can hone their skills doing that, definitely, so.
I don't need any practice at that, no.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the council? Would any, thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone in the chamber like to talk about this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll go to item six B.
Item six B is change of zone 08041A, application of Kelly Jacob for a change of zone expanding the Pine Woods Planned Unit Development boundary limits from AGR Agricultural Residential to R3 Residential District on approximately 3.03 acres with adjustments to the zoning and subdivision regulations on property generally located at 6909 Pine Lake Road.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Gergen with the Clark Anderson Partners, uh, here representing Kelly Jacob, the owner of the property requesting the change of zone from AGR to an R3 PUD to expand the Pine Woods PUD development to include his auto repair business. And I'd be happy to take any questions you may have at this time. We were on consent agenda and, uh, planning commissioner approved and agreed to all of the city conditions with this application.
Other questions from the council? Councilwoman Gaylor Beard?
Thanks, Mr. Gergen. Uh, given that this isn't a use that's typically allowed in this PUD, could you talk about what steps have been taken to try and mitigate any potential negative impacts on the residential in the area?
Sure, sure. Uh, let's, uh, talk a little bit about the property at this point. Um, it's bounded on the north by the expanding Pine Lake Road arterial road, and so it's a, a triangular shaped property. We have floodway on the west. We have the existing commercial PUD that we're expanding on the east. And so it's a very hard-shaped property for any type of development residentially. Um, the owner is, it's a owner-occupied, uh, business, and so Kelly's Auto Repair. They are downsizing, and they are wanting to expand their business to where they, like a live, a true live-work situation. They have a couple outbuildings, and this will be doing their, um, auto repair business. We've agreed to the city conditions of, I believe it's a, a 5,000 square foot size maximum. We agreed to, uh, no parking, out, outdoor parking, storage of vehicles. Um, we have, uh, agreed to planting the street trees and sidewalk when Pine Lake Road does get widened, and to take our access. Right now, the property is taking access off Pine Lake Road, and so we'll be taking it off from the interior road of the PUD development when that does come forward.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? See you and no one else?
Oh, sorry, I would like to talk to planning. Sorry, staff.
That was my phone, I didn't notice.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department.
Stevie, would you mind putting a map up and just help us understand the constraints of the site and, and a little more about approving this use, which isn't necessarily typically a desirable use next to residential, but, uh, I know we've got the new joint police fire station going in nearby. Lot of water on that map, flood, flood plain on that map.
Yeah, so on this, uh, particular exhibit, it shows the floodway in the dark blue. The flood plain is in the light blue. Pine Lake Road, which is currently closed and being widened, four lanes, is on the north side. 70th Street is on the east. Uh, the property in, uh, being added to the existing PUD is shown here in the triangular shape. To the east is already approved in the Pine Woods, uh, PUD commercial development.
I was going to ask you about that, because it's listed as R3 in the staff report, but it sounds like, we spoke earlier, that that's not actually the intended, uh,
Sure.
use, if you could elaborate.
PUDs that have a mix of uses, and they want to be flexible on the boundaries, they leave the underlying zoning R3, even though there will be a mix of commercial uses or apartments. And so we have several PUDs in town that are, uh, all R3, even though they have commercial areas in them. Sometimes in the PUD, they have a much more specific boundary in mind, so they go ahead and plat, some of it B2 PUD, some of it R3 PUD, some of it R5 PUD. So we have kind of a mix, so I can understand the confusion in that this entire area, um, will still be an R3 PUD, um, but this specific area between 70th and the future 69th Street, all of this is shown for future commercial development on the southwest corner of 70th and Pine Lake. To the north, uh, intersection, that is, um, some self-storage and some office. And then on the northeast is kind of the very tip-end of, we have the Home Depot, the Still, there's some other, uh, pad sites, Humane Society on, on the northeast corner. Uh, to the southeast of it, uh, of that intersection is currently acreage development, uh, that we've had people along the south side of Pine Lake talk to us about, uh, transitioning to townhomes or something like that. Um, so part of the unique part of this site is, so we have commercial development here. The applicant who is asking to, for the currently, to keep the existing house and have the auto repair. The lot on the other side of the drainage way is almost probably about 90% in the flood plain and floodway. There's one existing house there. Then the next lot is the fire station, police station, which of course will have a 24-hour operation and an, an impact on the adjacent properties. And over to the west before the, uh, railroad tracks is owned by Campus Life, and they have a very large facility there where they have a lot of youth and activities as well. So in this, in this kind of strip, we have a lot of impact of the flood plain. We have a Campus Life facility. We have a commercial development, and we have a fire station. And so we thought really kind of these three existing houses that were left, really long-term, it makes sense that they have some type of a, of a commercial use, um, because they basically have Pine Lake on one side, flood plain, floodway on the other, and they're interspersed with these other uses that are very clearly not residential, um, in terms of their development. Uh, and so with the restrictions that are part of the PUD, um, we thought this was an appropriate use, and it was, uh, also unanimously recommended by the planning commission as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Context, it's definitely an area in transition.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions for this presenter? Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this proposed change? Seeing no one else coming forward, uh, that brings us to the end of this public hearing. And now we're down to ordinances on third reading and regulated resolutions.
Item seven A, creating water district 1210 for the purpose of constructing a six-inch water main in Greenwood Street from 48th to 49th and along 49th from Greenwood to Adams, and assessing the cost thereof against the benefited properties.
Does anyone here would like to speak on this agenda?
Nope.
I do have a question for staff on this one.
Okay.
Ms. Esposito?
Yeah.
All right.
I was looking for the voting portion. Hi, would you help us? I'm struggling today.
We're Miki Esposito, Director of Transportation and Utilities.
Thanks for being here. I don't know if Ms. Philippi was planning to give us a report back, or if she provided one. I missed it, but wanted to hear back about the constituent who raised a concern about this district.
Absolutely. So Mr. Meyer, if you recall, came up last week. He said he had missed the notification when Suzie met with him after the council meeting. He did remember that he received the first notification of the kind of, uh, open house, community meeting that they had. Uh, and then he received the second letter to be here at public hearing. So we're good on notifying him. Um, when she explained also that this is step one of the process, and what will happen is, um, if you vote for creating the district, we'll go back, do the engineering, create more, um, robust cost estimates, and that's a point in time where we will engage the neighborhood again about how much things will cost. Um, and if at that time, Mr. Meyer, um, has concerns, um, then he can certainly bring those to you at the time the district is, or the costs are levied. Um, when she spoke to him after the meeting on Monday, um, he was relieved to find out that he could pay this off in 20 years. So we thought that was a good sign that he would be okay, and he just, he, I think he had the impression he was supposed to pay right away. And so we said, there's going to be a long time. We have to get and develop more robust cost estimates, and we'll continue to engage him on affordability. So we'll just, it's a process, and with your vote tonight, um, it'll be the beginning of that process. Does that help?
Thank you.
Okay.
I think Councilman Eskridge has some questions.
Of course.
Thank, thank you. So, um, that, that helps to clarify things, because as I understood it from last week, the cost was 140,000, and each of the residents, uh, residences were expected to pay 2,000.
Yes.
Uh, but that's, we aren't there yet.
Yeah, and I think his impression was he, it was due and payable, like soon. So he has a little time. And then we'll just finalize the details on, um, the actual costs and work with him again.
Okay. And as I understand it, the problem is, is each of those residents is, is served by the same water line.
Yes.
So there's a question of capacity for each of them, and then you shut one off, it potentially all of them get shut off, so.
Yeah, they're sort of linked up together. It's kind of a mess for them. So this will be good, better service for each of them, um, and more robust even fire protection that we have to think about. So he, he's there with us, but we'll just keep working with him as we, uh, develop the project and, and get those finalized costs and see where we can land. Now, just so you know, when things are levied, they come back to the council for approval, and you have the discretion to work on interest payments. and you have the discretion to work on interest payments and amount of payments at that time, so that discretion doesn't go away on the next round. Okay?
Good, thank you.
Now, I, no, thank you, I'm going to go back on track. We should have had a motion and a second before we had this discussion, but me being Speedy Gonzalez here, I didn't give the clerk a chance to read who introduced and made a second. Can we go back to that portion? Who?
Would you like me to reread it again?
Hmm?
Okay.
Yes.
Creating Water District 1210 for the purpose of constructing a six-inch water main in Greenwood Street from 48th to 49th and along 49th from Greenwood to Adams, and assessing the cost of thereof against the benefited properties, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gaylor Baird, second by Christensen, and then the discussion we just had, plus any additional discussion among the council. Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item...
Yes, you go.
7B, Approving the O Street and Canopy Street Project Redevelopment Agreement between Project Oscar 2.0 LLC, the city, and West Haymarket JPA relating to the redevelopment to property generally located west of Canopy Street and north of O Street on land owned by the West Haymarket JPA adjacent to the Blue 3 parking garage and Olson Headquarters Building and adjacent Rides of Way in greater downtown Lincoln, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
We were going to take these, B, C, and D together. Would you like to read all three of those at one?
Sure.
Or should we do that separately?
We could, we could run them separate.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Gaylor Baird and a second by Christensen. Discussion of 7B. Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, just for your information, as I reported during our director's meeting, JPA Board did meet and voted last week to approve this agreement.
Thank you. Other comments by the council? Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Item 7C, please.
Amending the fiscal year 1819 CIP to authorize and appropriate up to 2,805,000 in TIP funds for the O Street and Canopy Street redevelopment project, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Item 7D, please.
Authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the O Street and Canopy Street redevelopment project, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion of 7D. Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Item 7E.
Approving the Food and Beverage Services Agreement for the Pinnacle Bank Arena and Related Facilities between the city and SMG Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as saver for a one-year term commencing October 3rd, 2018, with the option to renew for one additional three-year term, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.